Check, check. Do you want to take, should we take that down? Is that the screen, that's not a screen share out of the deck, is it? Good evening and welcome to the October 15, 2024 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Salim Nice. This evening's Hybrid City Council Meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom, and we're also broadcasting live on MITV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Thanks for joining us tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned off for roll call. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androwl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Wyker, here. Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Here.
And Mayor Nice.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody could stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some move.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Androwl.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. The agenda is approved. Our next item of regular business is City Manager Report. We welcome City Manager Jesse Bond.
We are cruising tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Casey's going to assist me with the screen share. Thank you. Happy Tuesday, October 15th. Council, a quick look ahead, and this is a good reminder. Your next City Council meeting is on Monday, November 4th at 5:00. We did change the date of that meeting due to the election. Also, up on your screen are the upcoming Board and Commission meetings. Just a reminder that all of our Board and Commission meetings, in addition to our council meetings and other public meetings, are posted to our website. Next slide, please. A handful of updates for you. Just a quick update on the City Hall campus. We did take delivery of our third modular building a couple of weeks ago. This is one of three modular buildings that is intended to house our police department due to the closure of City Hall last year. We are working on, let's see, the ramps and stairs have gone in. The building is energized. The plumbing is completed and was also inspected. We're working on the data cabling and a few other items like access control, that's our key cards, and furniture installation. We intend to be into that building the first week of November. Many, many team members working to mobilize that facility. That will complete our suite of three modular buildings for police, and police will be moving from the Luther Burbank Administrative Building, their temporary home, into the modular buildings through the end of the year. All right. And by the way, I will be happy, the police chief, who's sitting to my left right now, or myself, would be happy to tour you through those facilities once we're fully mobilized. All right, switching subjects. Council, just a reminder, we put out a digital survey a couple of weeks ago. This is to collect park user information on both Clark and Groveland beaches. We are getting ready to start a planning process for both parks. We had formally described it as a master plan process, but really, the planning is going to be oriented to the water, the structures, the docks, the swimming area, and the access to those spaces. So we're using this survey to help us frame our planning approach, and we'll be updating you on the outcomes of that survey. We did want to include it here just to remind our community that they have until October 22nd to complete that survey. And it is posted on our website and on the Let's Talk page. Next slide. Project update, gosh, we're getting really close to the finish line on the Luther Burbank Boiler Building renovations and seismic retro fits. The steel roof cap has been installed on the boiler building. I'm sure we are waiting for that news. The contractor's also been working on some of the finish work, like handrails and the electrical work. We are really in the final stretch of finishing this project, and it should be done in November. We will make, schedule an opportunity for you to get down and see the work if you haven't had that opportunity to do so. Later this spring, we will be hosting a, I'll call it a ribbon cutting. We intend to feature two of our projects this spring, both the opening of the pickleball court and the work being completed on this building at the same event. All right, next slide, please. The SCADA system replacement, just mostly a heads up, this is a pretty extensive project. But right now, we're doing some work near pump stations 12, 15, 16, and 17. And if you live near one of those, you know who you are. We'll have vehicles in the area primarily from the city of Mercer Island and Valley Electric. We'll be working at each site for about two weeks. We're replacing electrical control panels and a number of other equipment at these facilities. This, this work is work that we've identified as needing to be updated. We're happy to see this is moving forward. We did experience some delays, just long supply chain lead time issues, but the work is moving forward. So we'll have more on this as, as we work through the list of the SCADA system improvements. Next slide, please. More, more on utilities, reservoir improvements. I'll remind you, we are midway through a really significant project regarding our two reservoirs. These are two 4 million gallon water reservoir tanks. The interior coatings on one of the tanks have, has been completed last year, and we're turning our attention to the second tank. So we have a contractor who is, you can see in that picture, has cut a temporary door into the south reservoir to provide access to the equipment that has to get inside to do the relining work. We're taking out the paint and the interior, and then we'll be doing some welding, not we, they, and also working on roofing. Council, several of you have asked, hey, can we take a peek inside that tank before you get too far along with that work? And the answer is yes. We'll be scheduling some time for you and some of our utility board members to go out to the site very soon. So stand by for that invitation. Next slide, please. All right, a reminder, we are currently recruiting for our Planning Commission. I think, Council, this has been in your weekly email just about every week. We are accepting applications through October 25th, so we're 10 days out, asking for anyone that meets the following requirements: two residents, laypeople that do not have any specific planning knowledge, one resident that is a practitioner, someone that has experience in the industry of planning, and two non-resident paid practitioners, the same thing, experience in the field of planning. So if you have any questions, we have the recruitment on our website. Again, the deadline is October 25th. Next slide, please. A handful of upcoming events. Arbor Day is this weekend, and this year, we are hosting a big event from 10:00 to 2:00 at Gallagher Hill Open Space. I understand we have a tall order to meet, planting over 800 plants. As of today, we have 20 volunteers signed up, and we'd like to double that number to get all those plants in the ground. So if you are interested, we have an opportunity to sign up there on the website. Pagliacci's is donating pizza for everybody that comes out to volunteer. My understanding is that we'll be parking in a couple of different locations, Shorewood and the Country Village Day School. Next slide, please. Pumpkins. This is, this is an early heads up. The city is once again hosting the Pumpkin Walk on Sunday, October 27th, in Mercerdale Park from 5:00 to 8:00. Everyone, everyone here in this room, I need you all to carve at least 25 pumpkins by October 27th and drop them off between noon and 4:00. I'm only partially joking because the success of the Pumpkin Walk does depend on us having pumpkins to put out at the Mercerdale, at Mercerdale Park. So we have pumpkins actually right outside here at the community center. They are free for the taking as long as you bring them back with a carving in it. All right, I'll continue to nag council and staff to show up with their pumpkins on October 27th. Next slide, and I believe the last slide. Council, we are also happy to host once again, we do this at least quarterly, Blood Drive here at the community center, November 4th from 10:30 to 4:30. Bloodworks Northwest is our partner on this event. The link to sign up is on the website. We'll also be pushing it out across our communications channels. We really, our August Blood Drive was, was a great success, and we're happy to continue hosting them here at the community center. All right, and I believe that is it for this evening. Oh, nope, I lied, one more. Thanks, Casey. The city's credit rating, some good news. That's right, I almost buried the whole lead here. Earlier this month, actually just last week, Matt Mornic, our Finance Director, presented an overview of the city's financial position to Moody's Credit Rating Division, although my title is on that slide. Full disclosure, Matt did all the work, and he did an absolutely outstanding job. This is a standard protocol that we do before we conduct a competitive bond sale, and I am really pleased to announce that, I think as of just yesterday, that Moody's latest assessment of the city's credit worthiness maintains the city's current AAA rating, which is the highest for a local government. Strong signals here related to Mercer Island's capacity to meet our financial commitments, thanks to your leadership, City Council, even under what we know are some challenging economic conditions. So we'll have more on this in the coming months, but I wanted to tell you that a lot of work went on behind the scenes to prepare us for that presentation, and obviously, we are very pleased with the outcome. And now with that, that is my last slide. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item of business is appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi judicial matters, or campaign-related matters. Note that there's a public hearing on the 2025-2026 biennial budget later this evening. If you're here speaking regarding the budget, I ask you to hold your comments until the public hearing. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the council may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they register with the city clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole and not to individual council or staff members. Anyone making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the city council may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. There'll be a timer on the screen. You all have three minutes to speak. When your time is ended, I'll thank you for your comments and move to the next speaker or item of business. City Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker tonight is Jennifer Goodrich.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jennifer Goodrich, I am a resident of Mercer Island, and today I am speaking as a representative of the Mercer Island Farmers Market, and I'm speaking in regards to the city's 20-year comprehensive plan. I would like to start by thanking the city for its support over the years. We're very glad to have you as a partner. For the last 17 years, Mercer Island Farmers Market's vision has been to bring sustainable agriculture and local food purveyors, artisans, and crafters to Mercer Island while also providing a welcoming community gathering space. We hope to continue that vision for the next 20 years and beyond. We noted and appreciated the mentions of Mercer Island Farmers Market in the current draft of the plan and hope the city will expand on those points so the future of our partnership is captured. As they say in real estate, the most important thing is location, location, location. We're incredibly lucky to have such a prime location for the market in town center and along Mercerdale Park. We believe this spot has been a key, if not the key, to our success. Generally, we agree with the city's plans for continued improvements to the area, in particular, those that align with our vision. As noted in the proposed plan, emphasizing and adding environmentally friendly features to the area, general infrastructure improvements, and improving accessibility will be critical to keeping town center and the market vibrant in the long run. Environmentally friendly additions such as solar-powered street lamps for energy, improved water bottles for refill stations, healthy park landscaping, and increased compost and recycling bins would align with our own sustainability goals. Increased seating, park benches and tables, and a dedicated stage or performance area would make the space more comfortable and invite the community to gather and linger. We're also pleased to see the continued focus on creative solutions for transportation as it is one of Mercer Island's top sources of greenhouse gas emissions, and parking is constrained when events like the market take place. The discussion around public parking lots in the area and/or even perhaps a shuttle service like Bellevue's Bellhop would increase our accessibility, as would the scheduling of the rollout of the planned changes and other island activities to appropriately interplay with the market's timing, which runs on Sundays, June through September, with a harvest market in November. From an operations perspective, we're required to have functional and clean bathrooms and dedicated hot potable water, which is currently built into the building adjacent to Bicentennial Park. The fact that we have storage available is a tremendous benefit that we hope to continue to have access to over the years. Mercer Island Farmers Market brings together thousands of islanders every week over the summer months and has become a true cornerstone event for the city. We hope this great feature of the island can continue to thrive in partnership with the city. Thank you for your time. Please reach out to the board at any time, and we hope to see all of you at our harvest market on November 24th.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Elizabeth Grove.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Grove, and I'm a senior at Mercer Island High School this year. I want to thank the City Council, especially some members, for being willing to meet with me and my partners in a group called Citizens Climate Lobby. I got involved with the environment in third grade because I wanted to join the Lakewood Green Team in order to remove styrofoam from takeout containers. And I've been more involved with the climate as I grow older, and I've been working on a more systemic level to try to affect change through laws and to make sure that we'll be able to have a healthy future for my children and everyone else's children and any other youth that will be most affected if our climate continues to deteriorate. I support the Climate Commitment Act because it funds transit passes, which means that Washington State youth can go on public transit for free. As a teenager, I don't always have access to a car. Both of my parents work, and I live with a single mom, and so it's really nice that I'm able to have access to public transportation for free, and that means a lot to me as a member of the community. And also, when I go to visit my grandparents in the San Juan Islands, we take the ferry, and the Climate Commitment Act is going to be funding a lot of electric ferries, and we're going to be electrifying our fleet. And so I just wanted to speak in support of the Climate Commitment Act today. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vihon Tandon.
My name is Vihon Tandon. I'm a resident of Mercer Island and a senior at Mercer Island High School. So similar to Liz, my passion for the climate was first ignited when I lived in India for a month, actually, and I saw just how bad the pollution was there. While the issue isn't nearly as bad here in the U.S., the root cause is the same: pollution from energy sources, vehicles, and industrial emissions. The Climate Commitment Act, the CCA, has made great strides in reducing our current emissions as well as establishing a future goal of 95% emission reduction by 2050. For us here in Seattle, there are some programs the CCA directly funds that have a direct impact on me and my peers, specifically, the implementation of the pedestrian and bicyclist Safe Routes to School program. I know I can, I personally know how that's impacted me because in a family with two working parents, I'm rarely able to drive a car to school and often rely on my electric bike. However, I find myself having to bike alongside island crests and cars that are zipping by that, let's admit it, high schoolers are driving. So I don't feel always, you know, very safe, and I wouldn't feel comfortable as an older brother if my sister, who's going to high school next year, would want to bike to school. Even then, I mean, I will admit, Mercer Island roads are relatively tame compared to those of Seattle downtowns. So I believe that, you know, it is so crucial that this effort to build safe roads stays funded for the sake of students who don't have access to a car, especially in a place like Seattle downtown. In a similar vein, the CCA plays a major role in the funding, public of, funding, public infrastructure. Washington State's 1.7, or $17 billion transportation funding packages leverage the CCA revenue to preserve and improve many highway, bridge, and road projects. It's such a fundamental thing that infrastructure, it plays in our, you know, society, and I think that if the CCA is funding these many things, it's just a, it's a fundamental part of our society. Overall, the CCA plays a massive role in funding crucial projects all over the state, and it's something that helps all people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Quinn Harper.
Hi, my name is Quinn Harper, and I'm a resident of Mercer Island and also a student at Mercer Island High School. I was inspired to advocate for environmental protection after my family in Oregon and Eastern Washington was seriously affected by wildfires, wildfires that we felt the consequence of here on Mercer Island through, you know, poor air quality and smoke. I also came here today to share how the Climate Commitment Act has impacted my life and others across Mercer Island. The, for some background, the CCA passed in 2021 places a quarterly price on carbon emissions and directs the proceeds to mitigation efforts. It is a valuable act that helps protect Washington from the impacts of climate change and funds climate-friendly projects across the state with over $1.8 billion raised in funding so far. Some CCA funds are going towards wildfire prevention and suppression across the state, which obviously hits home for me, and not only helps the full state, but also helps protect Mercer Island's air quality and climate regulation. I know as someone with asthma and a vulnerable population, there's been like many instances just in the past couple of years where I can't even leave my house because of smoke or extreme air temperatures. In addition, CCA funds go to expanding innovative and climate-friendly agriculture across the state, and not only does this protect the environment, it ensures the food we eat on Mercer Island is safe, organic, and accessible. And so both of those are ways the CCA funds helps Washington and just the Mercer Island community, and it really is not only important for the Washington and Mercer Island community, but it sets a climate-friendly example across the United States as Washington is a leader in innovation and climate, and we hope that Mercer Island recognizes these benefits and continues to support the CCA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Addie Smith. However, I don't see Addie in the meeting, Mr. Mayor, so I'll move to the last speaker, which is Dan Nordell.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dan Nordell. I'm a 21-year resident of Mercer Island. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees of Mercer Island Country Club, and I am coming to give you a bit of status and, and thank you for kind of all efforts. So, quick status, you will get an invite to the opening of the Junior's Tennis Training Facility, which we would project to be in the first week of December. So we're making good progress. We brought a challenge and a solution to the council, to the, to leadership several years ago. A lot of patience, a lot of assistance came from the council, from leadership, from CPD. We're extremely grateful, and I'm really excited to invite you all out. Hope to see all of you in December.
Thank you. Okay, no further public comment? We're going to move to the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains AB 6554, October 4, 2024 payroll certification, certification of claims for September 27 and October 4, 2024, and electronic funds transfers of July and August 2024. City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting Minutes of October 1, 2024, and AB 6539, 2024 Work Plan Update. Council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some move. Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Androwl.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
And Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, consent is approved. Our first item of regular business is AB 6555, Public Hearing on the 25-26 Biennial Budget. This public is, this public hearing is now open as of 5:24 PM. Individuals who register with the city clerk's office before 4:00 PM today may make public comments on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. City Clerk, is there anyone signed up for public comment that wishes to address the council?
Mr. Mayor, there is no one who signed up to speak during the public hearing.
Okay, seeing that there's no further testimony this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of 5:25 PM. Thank you, and council, we'll come back later on this item for regular business for the presentation discussion on the 25-26 Biennial Budget. Our next item of regular business is AB 6552, Arch 2025 Work Program and Budget Approval. We welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas, CPD Deputy Director Allison Van Gork.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. This is an annual event that the council does, approving the Arch Work Program and Budget, and Allison, our deputy director, has just a few short slides to run through here this afternoon for you before we take action. So, Allison?
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I've just got a handful of slides. I'll go through those now and then take any questions. All right, so in summary, I'm just going to give you an overview of what Arch is and what they do, the work plan program that's under consideration, the budget numbers, some next steps, and then the recommendation tonight. So just to start us off, I think most people are aware, but Arch is an intergovernmental coalition of 15 cities as well as King County. They're all located in eastern King County. It's a joint effort to plan for and provide affordable housing in East King County. Been working at it since 1992, when the coalition was formed. And this year, earlier this year, the Arch Executive Board adopted a new strategic plan called Build More Affordable Housing Faster. And so the work program I'm presenting tonight is really focused on moving the strategies and the strategic plan forward. So the work program includes a lot of the same themes that we've seen from the past, a continued focus on affordable housing investments through the Housing Trust Fund, as well as administering and overseeing the affordable housing assets that have already been secured by Arch. And it also includes support for each of the members with policy and planning work for affordable housing, including compliance with all of the recent state housing legislation that's been passed in the last few years. And Arch has been helping us with compliance with HB 1220 this year, and we'll be turning attention to HB 1110 and 1337 as soon as we finish the comp plan. And then with the new strategic plan, there's also new capacity being added at Arch with two additional staff positions, and that capacity helps to create space for some new programs. Three I wanted to highlight are a new focus on facilitating targeted state and regional policy efforts to increase funding and reduce barriers to affordable housing. This will help support work that Mercer Island and other member cities are doing at the state legislative level, to advocate for affordable housing policy, for revenue streams to support more affordable housing, and some more efforts along those lines. They're also looking to engage elected officials through tours and workshops and briefings to help build understanding of affordable housing and the policy and funding tools that are needed to support Arch in the local jurisdictions in meeting the needs for affordable housing that we're all trying to work toward right now. They're also going to be considering some potential changes to Arch's legal and governance structure with an aim to streamline decision-making processes and help the coalition take on, you know, even larger policy challenges and essentially get more done with, you know, the most efficient use of our resources. So that's going to be considered over the next year with the assistance of a consultant, and recommendations will be brought forward to the executive board and the member cities. So getting down to the numbers, we're moving to a two-year biennial budget process for Arch this year, which for sort of city of Mercer Island, it aligns really well with our own budgeting process, and will allow us to have firm numbers as we go into the biennial budget to project the expenses for Arch going forward. And as I said, this budget Um, and as I said, this budget also includes the addition of two new staff positions, and so there is about a little just over 20% co- uh, increase in costs from 2024 to 2025. Um, the total budget for 2025 is about 2.7 million, and then 2.8 million for 2026. And the Mercer Island portion of that is about 95,000 for 2025 and 98,000 for 2026. Um, in terms of next steps, I just wanted to let the council know that those budget numbers I just mentioned are included in the city's preliminary biennial budget that you'll be reviewing later tonight. Also included in the city's budget is $35,000 per year for the Housing Trust Fund, and those are the dollars that go directly into funding preservation and construction of housing units. All right, so our recommendation tonight is to approve the 2025 to 2026 Arch Work Program and Budget, including Mercer Island's contribution of 95,259 in 2025 and 98,405 in 2026. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counsel, are there any questions? All right, not seeing any questions. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the Arch 2025-2026 Work Program and Administrative Budget, including Mercer Island's contributions of $95,259 in 2025 and $98,405 in 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Androw. City Clerk, any discussion? Councilmember Reynolds?
Just a quick question or confirmation, the Housing Trust Fund contribution will be discussed at a later time as part of the regular budget process, and it's not covered by this motion, is that correct?
This is the work plan for the operating budget.
Right, but the, but the trust fund contribution will be discussed at a later time.
Yes. Inside the budget, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
And Councilmember Waker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, our next item of regular business is AB 6553, Reallocation of the Arch HTF Funds for the Redmond Plymouth Housing Project, and we welcome back CPD Director Jeff Thomas and CPD Direct, Deputy Director Allison Van Gork.
Yeah, real quick before Allison gets started here, she's got a few short slides again. Uh, this was something that was brought to our attention here just recently, and, um, we, um, in consultation, uh, with our city attorney's office, um, it was recommended we bring this to council for approval. So with that, Allison, take your way, please.
Yeah, I've just got a couple of slides here to give you an overview of what this is all about. So, as I may have already said, the Arch Housing Trust Fund provides funding directly for construction and preservation of affordable housing in the form of loans and grants to private or nonprofit developers that are including low-income housing in the project. Um, in February of 2023, the Mercer Island City Council approved an allocation of some of the Housing Trust Fund dollars for the Kenmore Supportive Housing Project that was to be developed by Plymouth Housing. However, um, the City of Kenmore has since decided not to move forward with that project, um, but the City of Redmond was able to step in and partner with Plymouth Housing to move the project to CEO and property in Redmond. So this new project in Redmond is located on city-owned surplus property near a future light rail station with excellent access to services and amenities. Um, the project itself would be material materially similar to the initial proposal. It includes 100 units of affordable housing at 0 to 30% AMI for people that are exiting homelessness, and it provides supportive services for those individuals on site. Um, and I wanted to note that this is 0 to 30% permanent supportive housing, and so contributing to this project will count towards the Arch Member Cities Affordable Housing Targets for Permanent Supportive Housing. Um, another advantage of this is it will help to retain the complex financing and funding that was put together for the original Kenmore project, including, um, some really valuable federal housing tax brackets. And by just transferring this to a new location, it'll enable the project to break ground really quickly without having to take time to reestablish those funding sources. Um, and finally, uh, each Arch member needs to approve reallocation of the Housing Trust Fund funds to the project with the updated funding conditions. So in terms of next steps, there's, once the council takes action on this out reallocation, there's no further action needed. The project can move forward and is expected to do so here in the coming months. Um, I also just wanted to note that the process for awarding funds in the 2024 funding round for the Housing Trust Fund is underway right now. The, these executive board will be discussing that soon and making a recommendation to city councils, which we'll be bringing back in the first quarter of 2025. All right, the recommendation is there on the screen, and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thanks for that. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, can you just clarify? You said this will count towards our permanent supportive housing quota. There were 100 units up there, presumably every city can't take the full 100. We must get an allocated share of it. How is that share determined, and what is it?
That's absolutely correct. Um, Arch and the member cities are still working with King County to determine the exact formula that they're going to use to make that kind of determination in terms of how the credit is allocated. Um, I can tell you that, um, in terms of the amount of funding that we're putting into the project, it's around, I think, 1.5% of the total cost. So, you know, it's a small fraction for Mercer Island.
So is it safe to assume that our, our, we'll get credit probably for one or two units, you know, somewhere around that one and a half percent?
I think that's a good assumption.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Androw?
Yeah, thanks, um, Allison. Is the shift to Redmond expected to increase the total, uh, overall cost of the project?
It's not. Um, there was similar situation in that the land for the project was being contributed by the cities, um, Kenmore versus Redmond, and so the actual construction costs are expected to be about the same.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Waker?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for bringing this forward and working with Redmond to make this come together. I think it was too bad that the Kenmore project fell apart, but really great that the cities could work together to get this done in Redmond. So fully support moving this over, and thank you for doing the work on the backend to make it happen.
Okay. Counsel, is there a motion to reallocate $53,300 previously awarded to Plymouth Housing to the Redmond Supportive Housing Project, the revised conditions as described in Exhibit 1?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Any discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Waker.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB 6551, First Reading of Ordinance Number 24C-15, Open Space Zone Code Amendment. And we welcome CPD Director, Deputy Director Allison Van Gork and Management Analyst Carson Hornsby. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, good evening, counsel. My name is Carson Hornsby, Management Analyst. I have a few slides to share with you this evening on the Open Space Zone. Uh, the purpose of this agenda bill is to conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 24C-15, which is the Open Space Zone Code Amendment. Before I jump into the code, uh, oh, I'd like to share a little bit of background information about this project. Uh, the Open Space Zone started as a part of a larger work item on the scope of work for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Uh, that scope of work included creation of a new park zone, and in initial discussions on the development of the park zone, the Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, recommended that the zone was, uh, should be split into two separate zones, one for parks and one for open space. The Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, and the Open Space Conservancy Trust Board collaborated, uh, with staff on the draft Open Space Zone. Is this mic cutting out a little bit?
It's the noise cancelling. It'll be all right.
Sorry about that. Um, the, the PRC and Open Space Conservancy Trust collaborated with staff, uh, to develop the draft Open Space Zone, and they presented a joint recommendation to the Planning Commission in May. That, that recommendation included three different pieces. One is the code update, the zoning map, and the land use map. The legislative review process related to the land use map and the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update was completed, uh, by the, by the Planning Commission, and the recommendation was passed forward to council in June. And then more recently, uh, in September, the Planning Commission finished the legislative review process related to the code amendment and the land use, uh, the zoning map, and that's, uh, part of this work item tonight. Uh, they approved their recommendation on September 25th. So if approved, Ordinance 24C-15 would, uh, adopt the Open Space Zone Development Regulations and, uh, zoning map, and it would do it on an effective date that is shared with the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update on December 31st. Um, this is important because we want to make sure that both documents are adopted at the same time and, uh, that there's no lapse, uh, in time for inconsistencies between the two maps. So jumping into the code, um, the purpose of the Open Space Zone is to preserve, protect, restore, and enhance open space lands. Uh, these provide a number of benefits to the community, from ecological benefits to access to nature for passive recreation and relaxation, as well as educational and stewardship opportunities. The designation requirements of the zone specify that land must be owned, leased, or managed by the City of Mercer Island and fulfill the purpose statement in order for that land to be included within the zone. The uses permitted, uh, proposed within the Open Space Zone include trails, passive recreational uses, which are defined as things like walking, jogging, or wildlife viewing, passive recreational amenities, which include things like signs, kiosks, uh, benches, picnic tables, habitat restoration and enhancement, uh, temporary uses, uh, as authorized by the city manager or designee. Wireless communications facilities are included here because they're already regulated in a citywide code and also heavily regulated by the FCC. And, uh, lastly, utilities are included as a permitted use if, uh, no reasonable alternative location exists. So as there is very little development proposed to be permitted within the Open Space Zone, the list of development standards is pretty short. Uh, we start with setbacks at 20 feet, uh, for adjacent properties, zone residential or multifamily, and zero feet for all other zones. Restrooms are only permitted on properties larger than 100 acres and are limited to 300 square feet, so this only applies to Pioneer Park, as that's the only, uh, open space that's over 100 acres. Signs are proposed to be governed by the citywide sign code, with a few caveats for interior and entrance signs. Uh, the size of those are up on screen. Um, the exterior lighted, uh, exterior lighted signs are prohibited within the Open Space Zone, and natural colors on signage is required unless necessary for public health or safety. Kiosks are also included in the development standards, and, uh, the s- uh, sizes, uh, an increased sizes allowed at Pioneer Park again because it's over 100 acres. And lastly, trail standards are limited to eight feet in width, uh, and this is a pretty short section because we want to allow a bit of leeway for staff to, uh, develop trails based on habitats and landscape, and those needs can, uh, vary from property to property. The last piece of the ordinance is the zoning map. That's included as an attachment at the end of the ordinance. Um, you can see the proposed map up on screen there to your right. It includes all the areas that are proposed to be zoned open space. This includes everything that is classified as open space within the pros plan, and that list of properties is on the left-hand side of your screen. So if this ordinance is approved or adopted, it will, uh, replace the, the current zoning map that's in, uh, the, in Appendix D of Title 19 of the zoning code. So I believe that's all I have. Uh, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for any questions or discussions.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much for that. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Reynolds?
It was on the, the Parks Commission when we went through this. Uh, as I looked at what you had submitted, I didn't see any obvious signs of what the Planning Commission had changed, but I probably just missed it. Can you give us an overview of what they did change?
They, I think there was one amendment to the Wireless Communications Facilities Section. It's just a, a simple, um, wording. I can, um, it wasn't of any substance, I don't think. Um, it was a minor scripturis error. There were also some errors on the, the zoning map as well that we cleaned up for this version that's proposed to be included in the code.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, is there a motion to schedule ordinance number 24C-15 for second reading on November 4, 2024, with an effective date of October or December 31, 2024?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. All right, any amendments? Uh, City Clerk, I have an amendment. I'm wondering if you can put on the screen. It's a amendment to the definitions, and I'll let her put that up there and let everybody read it. Maybe just as a quick note before we get into the amendment, the definitions are in the general definitional section of the city's code, so these definitions don't apply only to open spaces. They could apply to, uh, any other reference within the city code. And the intent here is to, uh, take undefined terms out of the definition of passive recreational uses and be a little bit more specific on the definition of trail. And I will let you get that up on the screen. Okay. So the amendment is, is striking the second part of the passive recreational uses section, and it is striking, um, facilities used, which is kind of the undefined term that's causing awkwardness in there. So the amendment would be, uh, as you read on the screen. I don't know whether the best way to make the amendment to the motion is just, uh, propose an amendment to the definitions as displayed on the screen?
That was what I had drafted, Mr. Mayor.
This is the wrong version? Oh, yeah, the strike through is not showing. Yeah, so I have, uh, passive recreational uses. Passive recreational uses have a low impact on the natural and built environment and include activities such as hiking, wildlife viewing, walking, jogging, and picnicking. That is the end of the amended definition of passive recreational uses. The definition of trail gets added text, so the new definition of trail is "an off-street path for passive recreational uses. Trails may include structural components such as boardwalks, bridges, and stairs." Okay, so I've made the motion for the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. Okay. Any discussion, any questions? Councilmember Reynolds?
Just a, a quick question, and maybe the city manager will help my memory on this. Um, passive uses does not specifically mention bicycling, but nor does it say it's not passive. So the distinction of whether that counts as passive or not, who gets to make that decision will be, will it be park-dependent or?
You are correct. We did talk about this for over an hour at the Parks Commission meeting.
And I just can't remember what we concluded.
Yeah, this definition was, was, uh, written, uh, not to preclude biking or any other activities that might come up. As we talked about at the Park Commission meeting, and I've shared with some of you in our recent conversations, those types of uses either need to be regulated in the Parks Code, which I have now added to your work plan, our work plan for the next biennium, or through, uh, policies, site-specific policies or operational policies. Uh, the zoning code really should not be in the business of regulating, you know, those types of activities. That's why this was written this way.
So it's a, it's, these are illustrative examples and not meant to be restrictive, and nothing we vote on tonight is going to preclude bicycling in those parks. That'll be addressed elsewhere if we choose to do so.
That is correct. And if I recall from the Parks Commission discussion, and it, it has been about six months since we talked about this, I think they felt strongly about putting the "such as" pieces in there, just to frame the types of activities that would occur passively. We had quite- We had quite a debate about that, but there were two that were left out. That was, one was horses and one was biking.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Before I call the roll on the on the amendment to the motion, city manager, does anybody on staff want to comment on the amendment, amended language, if there's any concern from the city's end?
I'll just share that the mayor asked me to preview the changes, and we have no concern. I actually like that it streamlines the definition just a bit more than it was originally. The other thing we are keeping a close eye on, as the mayor mentioned, was that this definition will also show up and be needed when we adopt the park zone. So we need to keep our definitions nimble, and I think I think we achieved that with your amendment.
Excellent. Okay. Not seeing any discussions, City Clerk? Well, Councilmember Jacobson.
The, there are a ton of trails, this whole trail system on Mercer Island, some of which I know goes through open spaces, and a lot doesn't go through parks or open spaces, if, at least when I was a regular user of them. And I have some concern about bicycles or scooters or other things and what that's going to do to our trails. And this isn't the time for me to give a long speech, but I have a, I would like to learn more about what that's going to do to the maintenance aspect, particularly of trails. And so that's my marker, Madam City Manager, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to know more about that at some point.
Received.
Okay, anything else? All right, City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
And Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the amendment to the motion is adopted. Any other amendments? Any discussion on the amended motion? All right, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion passes. Our next item of regular business, AB 6555, Presentation and Discussion on the 2025-2026 Bennial Budget Workshop Revenue Forecast, Operating Budget, and Budget Proposals. And we welcome Finance Director Matt Morneck.
Good evening, Mayor Neese, members of the council, and the entire staff team that is joining us remotely this evening. I'm Matt Morneck, your Finance Director, and welcome to the second budget workshop for the 2025-2026 Bennial Budget Review Process. Ben Schumacher, the city's financial analyst, is going to steer the deck, and he's pulled up the first slide. So thank you, Ben. Let's let's get moving. I'm going to be joined tonight by City Manager Bond as we go through about 35 slides, beginning with an overview of the city's revenue forecast and the current economic conditions that have informed it. We're going to focus on the city's primary operating funds, the general fund, and the newly established Development Services Fund. Jesse is going to cover the operating budget, both with where we've been and where we are headed, as outlined in the work plan goals and in the proposed staffing levels. The third part of our workshop tonight will involve seeking the city council's input on seven budget proposals as outlined in Exhibit 3. I'm joined by the leadership team this evening and members of finance, who are all here remotely, and we're eager and ready to answer your questions. Next slide. This is the schedule to fine-tune the 2025-2026 Bennial Budget this fall. And so tonight is our first public meeting of the budget development process. Our goal tonight is to receive input from the city council on both the proposed work plan and the disposition of the remaining general fund balance from 2023 year-end, which is in regards to the budget proposals. We're really looking to incorporate your feedback that we received tonight into the final 2025-2026 Bennial Budget. If additional staff work is required, we will come back for a as-needed budget workshop on November 4th to provide a follow-up as required. The final public meeting for the budget review process is on November 19th, which is when the city council will adopt, review and adopt a number of budget-related ordinances. We're aiming to adopt the budget on December 3rd, first meeting in December. Okay, next slide. All right, let's dive in. Next slide, Ben. Thank you. As a reminder, the revenue forecast is a comprehensive analysis on the city's revenues across all funds. And so this information sets spending levels every two years, and we revisit the underlying assumptions in the revenue forecast at the midpoint every biennium. And so when we build the forecast, we look at what's happening at the national level, what's happening within the state and the local level in regards to the economic activity. But we also place, I would say, the greatest emphasis on what's happening within our immediate region and the previous 12 to 24 months of the city's financial performance. And so we also take into account the research and findings from the larger community that tracks the economic activity within the region. So that that includes the King County Office of Economic and Financial Analysis and the State Economic and Revenue Forecast Council. Next slide. On October 1st, the city council received a financial status update on the first six months of 2024. And some of the key takeaways from that work was that the general fund revenues remain healthy and that we have had reasonable levels of growth in 2023, but that those levels of growth have somewhat leveled out. They have have remained pretty flat in the first six months of 2024. And so we don't take this as a sign of a weakening economic activity or a weakening economy at a time when interest rates are starting to come down. An index that that staff references when we build the forecast is the University of Michigan's Inflation Expectation Survey. And what this does is it measures consumers' expectations about the economy, specifically inflation. And so through the end of September, the survey is pointing to that that consumer expectations for the economy are on a relative upswing and that consumers expect interest rates to continue following for the next for the next year. Next slide. This expectation is shared by the staff team, particularly given the Federal Reserve's recent decision to cut the federal funds rate by a half percentage point, while also indicating more rate cuts are ahead. This line graph shows the last 10 years of inflation in our region as measured by the Consumer Price Index for Urban Consumers, CPIU. Since its peak in 2022, you'll notice that the CPIU aesthetically declined. And so the forecast includes the Federal Open Market Committee's recent rate cut on the federal funds rate and views this as a signal that the Federal Reserve is managing risk within the economy and that the economy is healthy. And this is what the general fund revenues is telling us. Next slide. This table provides a high-level overview of general fund revenues projected through the rest of the year and in 2025 and 2026. So from left to right, the first column is the major revenue groups in the general fund, the 2024 adopted budget in the next column, forecasted figures for 2024 in the third column, and the difference between the two in the fourth column, which you'll notice, we're projecting that through the end of this year, revenues are going to come in $5.8 million higher than what was in the original adopted budget. We've also included forecasted figures for 2025 and 2026. The assumptions underlying these projections are outlined in detail in Exhibit 2. But for the next few slides, we're going to focus on where we are observing the greatest variability, which is in sales tax, license, permit, and zoning fees and interest earnings. Okay, next slide. There's a lot of information in this chart, so we're going to walk through it. This is a 10-year look back at the annual sales tax revenues as illustrated by the black line, and then the colored bars indicating the year-over-year percentage change, green indicating positive year-over-year growth, and red indicating a year-over-year decline. Sales tax revenue is forecasted for 2024 through 2026, which is indicated by the the blue dash line and the blue bars. Other than 2017, there's been year-over-year growth since 2014, with revenue growth in 2023, which came in roughly at 29%, similar to the growth rate that we experienced in 2015. And so in 2024, our revenues are tracking with the levels that we saw in 2023, but their overall rate of change is flat. Next slide. Other than the construction sector, which is where we are seeing a bit of a slowdown in the first six months of 2024, most sectors where we track sales tax revenue activity remain strong. And so it's on this basis that staff projects that sales tax revenues are going to come in about $7.3 million by the end of the year and experience modest growth in 2025 with a growth rate of 3.7% and then 4% in 2026. Next slide. Revenues tied to licenses, permitting, and zoning fees have have been strong year-over-year, with revenues in the first six months of this year coming in $650,000 more than they did in 2023 during the same period. And so this this variance is largely due to one large development in the town center undergoing an unanticipated additional round of permitting. Staff is projecting that this revenue category is going to end 2024 at $3.9 million. And in 2025 and 2026, you'll notice that there's a drop-off in projections, and that's due to revenues that are tied to development services. We're pulling those out and we're putting out of the general fund and putting them into a new special revenue fund. The revenues that you see projected here have to do with business licenses and fire inspections, so those are going to remain in the general fund. Next slide, please. This table forecasts what we're projecting for revenues in the newly created Development Services Fund in 2025 and 2026. All revenues and expenditures that are related to the Community Planning and Development Department's work will be tracked to the Development Services Fund. And so the the third row in this table, interfund transfers in, in 2024, that number is made up of year-end balance that has been tied to permit activity over the past four years. And so these dollars are restricted dollars. They can only be spent on permit-related services work, and this is going to serve as the new fund's initial operating fund balance. In 2025 and 2026, the interfund transfers in that same that same third row are general fund contributions that support non-development services-related work in that the Community Planning and Development Department does, such as long-range planning. And so that that makes up about 22% of the department's operating budget. Staff anticipates that there's there's not going to be any new development in the town center in the next biennium, and we are forecasting that development services revenues are going to normalize with with modest increases in 2025 and in 2026.
Just a quick question on that. On the interfund transfer from the general fund, if there's Commerce or other agency grants, are are those reflected in the general fund transfer, or where is the grant revenue?
Tracking directly to the Development Services Fund.
Okay. So we're just not projecting any grants at the moment?
On this slide, we are not projecting any any grants.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide, please. For the first six months of 2024, the general fund has received $1.2 million in interest earnings. This amount exceeds the 2023 interest earnings for the first six months, which was 1.1 million, and it also exceeds every year in the the city's history. So we are we are now outdoing what was a record year in 2023. Many factors play play into how the city brings in interest earnings, and we've had some some good dialogue in the the question-and-answer matrix that with the questions that were submitted by the city council prior to this meeting. But the the primary reason is that the the 2024 revenue levels that we're experiencing with with interest has to do with the average earnings rate that's applied to the city's principal that's held in the local government investment pool. And from January to June of this year, that rate has been 5.46%. As staff has reported on previously, the interest earnings rate at the local government investment pool closely tracks with the federal funds rate that's held by the Federal Reserve. And and so we're taking this into account with our projections. And so the forecast takes into account the the Federal Open Market Committee's recent reduction of 0.5% to the federal funds rate, and we anticipate that interest earnings are going to decrease over the next two years, which is indicated in our projections for the 2025 and 2026 in the table. Next slide. Okay, we're going to bring it all together here with the five-year forecast for the general fund, which this this line graph is projecting revenues and expenditures in the general fund from 2024 through 2028, and we've included revenue and expenditure actuals from 2021 through 2023. The black line represents revenues, with the red line illustrating expenditures. The blue area at the very bottom just illustrates the the difference between the two, the variance. The drop in revenues from 2024 to 2025, the black line, is primarily due to, as I mentioned earlier, pulling out the development services revenues from the general fund and putting them in the new Development Services Fund. So that's what that drop is indicating. But putting that aside, general fund revenues are projected to remain healthy. The challenge comes in the out years. And so through from 2025 to 2028, revenues are projected to grow 5.6%. Expenditures, we are projecting are going to grow 14.7% over that same period. So this jump in expenditure growth is partly due to the budgetary impacts of city hall's closure and the residual effects of that, which have not yet hit the general fund, because we've been incurring most of those expenses and paying for them with the the initial design, for example, the initial design of the public safety and maintenance building, and the the closure of the building and housing city staff in other locations. We've been paying for that with ARPA funds and with year-end fund balance from prior years. Ongoing costs with like the leases associated with the city of Newcastle for housing municipal court operations and the modular buildings that are housing our police operations, these begin to hit the general fund in 2025. So that's that's what's feeding into the projection. Next slide. Okay, so let's open it up for questions.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? All right, Councilmember Androw.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Tracking so far pretty well. I appreciate the clarity and brevity of your presentation. But if we're moving revenues out to the Development Services Fund, shouldn't some expenditures follow those revenues?
Indeed, and they do.
Okay.
They do. All of the revenues and expenditures associated with Community Planning and Development Department's operations are now being housed and managed in the Development Services Fund.
Okay, so I guess I I thought I understood that the reason that the black and red lines diverged was because revenues were moved out to the Development Services Fund. What, tell me again, what is causing the black and red lines to diverge?
So the the black line is coming down because revenues is coming down.
Right.
Expenditures levels are not having a corresponding drop because we're, although we're pulling out the expenditures associated with the CPD department from the general fund, we're also incurring a number of new expenditures. So that's what why the expenditures are not dropping from 2024 to 2025, and that partially explains and mostly explains why the rate of increase year-over-year is so significant on the expenditure side. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Just want to start with a big thank you. I sent you around 40 questions on this over the weekend, I believe, and you gave some fantastic answers to all of them, so with fairly limited. fantastic answers to all of them, so with fairly limited time, so thank you for that. I have a few follow-up questions, but only a few that I want to address tonight, I think, and that relates to the interest earnings assumption.
Yeah.
If I recall correctly, and I haven't had time to fully digest this, we're getting around five right now, and you are 5.08 or something like that, and then you're suggesting the assumption is 3.75 for 2025, is that correct?
Yeah, the average monthly earnings rate, we're assuming 3.75%.
Can you just shed some light on how you come up with the 3.75? Because if I were if I were guessing, I would have said 3.25 or 4.25 to 4.50, somewhere in that range, but tell me what you're thinking.
Well, we took into account what we're seeing with the CPIU, the CPIW as well, and we're seeing how the expect interest rates are tracking within the region. And so this was a conservative estimate informed by the information that we had on hand and what the Federal Reserve has signaled to us. We've taken a deep dive into the local government investment pools' investment strategy, and they are very conservative. Their number-one goal is not to lose money. And so that's informed what we're proposing and what what kind of interest levels we hope to to gain in 2025.
Quick follow-up?
Go for it.
Can you just remind me for our financial management policies, when that interest earnings comes in, does it stay in the fund that the money that contributes the investment earnings? Or does it go to the all go to the contingency fund or something else like that when the money comes in?
Okay, so interest earnings are allocated at a proportional level to the funds on which the the principal is being held. So if it's, for example, if the water fund makes up 20% of the city's principal, 20% of the interest earnings go back to the water fund. We do this on a quarterly basis, and we continue to move the interest to the respective funds. When the contingency fund meets its target funding level, the money associated, the principal dollars associated with the contingency fund, we're getting very technical here, I apologize.
It's my fault.
Those dollars go to the general fund, only when the threshold target funding level for the contingency fund is met.
And those rules apply whether it's budgeted interest earnings or excess interest earnings. They're both treated the same way in terms of how they're allocated.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Section 6 of the city's financial management policy adds some helpful color on what the council can consider doing when we're in in periods where we have excess interest earnings.
Okay, not seeing any other questions. Carry on.
Okay, Ben, please pull up the slide, and I'm going to hand it over to Jesse Bond.
Good evening, Council. We decided just to put together a few slides to frame up the discussion on the work plan. I know several of you have reached out with potential amendments, so we'll get to that part of our discussion quickly. Next slide, please, Ben. A little bit of background, the work plan, which is in your budget notebook, is part of each of the department's budget. It outlines basically how we plan to spend our resources over the next two years. Some of the work is ongoing, but many of it is tied to very specific deliverables. And where appropriate, we include roughly the quarter that we anticipate completing that work. This is based on your priorities, your your large overarching goals and priorities, and obviously informed by your staff team and many of our adopted plans, which I'm going to talk about in just a minute. Next slide, please. Before we look forward, I want to take a moment to look back, because we've had two epically big years, not enough time tonight to celebrate all of the accomplishments, but a couple major ones. We secured a very important partnership with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and we made that transition, which was huge, thanks to Ally and the team for helping get all of that done. We maintained YFS services over the last two years during a time of very critical need. We did a whole lot of capital project work and a corresponding amount of planning work, water, sewer, parks, roads, stormwater, and more. Matt just talked about a whole new fund that we developed at your direction. Thank you for your leadership. And as of January 1, we will be live with that new fund to manage permit revenues. Also, really largely behind the scenes, but absolute beast is the new financial management software. You know, Council, if we think back four or five years ago, we looked at each other and said, the technology we have is just terrible, and it is really limiting what we can do. We knew it was a big lift, but you funded it, and the staff team's been working on implementation. So we're almost there, that very first phase, and, you know, more work to come to really optimize that new tool. Those are just a few of the highlights that I picked from the last two years, but we're really proud of all that we've done. Planning, I I put this slide in here because I wanted to also remind you of where we've come from. During the pandemic, we were in process with a number of our plans, and we had to pause all of that work, and it all got loaded up in the last four years. And if you're feeling planning fatigue, I'm feeling planning fatigue. But there's a lot to be proud of. You, in 2022, we did our ADA Transition Plan. That was about a year's worth of work. The PROS Plan was adopted. That was almost three and a half years' worth of work. More recently, the Town Center Parking Plan, the Kymet Action Plan, a new compensation plan, a cost allocation plan, and you can't see it on your screen right now because of the closed captioning. But underneath that box is your Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, which is not quite across the line, but it's darn close. So as you look at the work plan in the next two years, what I'm going to advocate for is that the focus should be on the doing, right, the action. We are a city that uses our plans actively. We open them up all the time, we reference them, and so that is how I have structured the next two years of work is is to, and I'm going to ask, resist the temptation to pull forward a plan that's sitting in the out-year. It's sitting there for a reason, like the Bike and Ped Plan. That's an important plan that needs to be updated, but we need to make space the next two years for the for the other work that that is really challenging to get done when we're doing these heavy planning lifts. And as I'm making that ask, I will also say, remember, it's not just us, the council and the staff, but it's also the community that has to follow along these very intense planning processes, and I think they also need a break, and we can focus on the action. So what does that look like? I didn't put everything into the slides here. Next slide, please, Ben. First of all, a little bit on staffing levels. You know, Council, I reached out to you last week, I sent you an email, and I'd be happy to meet with you and and go department by department, org chart by org chart, and and talk about the position moves. I checked in with the mayor and deputy mayor, previewed some of those slides. It's a dense deck, and I'm not sure it would have been the highest and best use of our time tonight, but I am available if you'd like like to walk through that. In the meantime, some high-level themes about our staffing plan. I'm proposing to maintain our staffing levels. Some of the positions are are changing a little bit or moving departments, but it's essentially the same headcount. You know, my style is an adaptive staffing model. As things are changing, as as positions are vacated through retirements or departure, we always evaluate that position and the need, and that will be continue to be our approach into the biennium. We are doing some realignment and a little bit of shuffling, mostly to get some more resources into the Public Works Department. That is specifically because of the capital project load. I will also mention, this isn't exactly clear in the budget document, and it's something we'd like to try to fix for the next budget is the, it's not always clear where the position is funded. And I'll use an example from the city manager's office. Robbie Cunningham Adams, who's a management analyst, works for me, about half of his position right now is supporting the Public Safety and Maintenance Building. So he too is technically carrying a capital project responsibility, even though his position is still showing in the city manager's office. So we'll think about ways to improve the look and feel of the budget and and improve your understanding of where staffing resources are spent. That's just one example. And obviously, I also shared at any given time, about 20% of our workforce is potentially eligible for retirement or getting really close to it. So this continues to be a theme, something that we're really watching and trying to plan ahead for. We've already started this. We have a new policy in place that incentivizes non-represented staff to give us a one-year notice in exchange for a vacation cash out, which allows us to hire ahead. We are doing some of that hiring ahead, and we are trying to create some overlap so that all of that institutional knowledge, often many decades, does not just walk out the door without a proper transition. All right, next slide, please. This is the table that just summarizes your FTEs and your LTEs. I don't know that we need to get into it tonight unless you have any particular questions, but again, the staffing model maintains our current level, and it's it's what I recommend we need to deliver the work plan that's also in your budget. Next slide. So let's talk about the work plan. There's way too much in that budget document to hit it all tonight. I have just three, three slides. Facilities, 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 that's the big one. The Public Safety and Maintenance Building design, also other facility needs that fall under that umbrella. Capital projects, we are driving a lot of resources to support the public works team, and even if we're not in public works, finance, customer service, attorney's office, clerk's office, everyone is pulling together to support these projects. We'll need to spend some time in the next biennium talking about the YFS Fund and the general fund. Both are projected to have expenditures exceeding revenues into the next biennium. On a more positive note, we have just adopted a new cost allocation policy, and we have a whole host of inter-local agreements that need to be renegotiated. Carson, who you saw tonight, is actually working with Matt and I on that project as we speak. I also dropped in a note throughout the work plan. We are embracing the not totally new, but still relatively new-to-government artificial intelligence era. We are going to be an early adopter of the suite of opportunities through Microsoft Office and looking at other ways we can incorporate new technology into our operations and to improve efficiency. So more coming on that, we're excited. Next up, some policy work, and again, not big, heavy-hitting plans, but you've heard a lot about e-bikes and scooters. In fact, I think tomorrow we'll be putting out an early and early communications on this, just updating people on state laws, but as we've looked into this, we're probably going to need our own suite of regulations. That's on our work plan. As we were going through the comprehensive plan, I noticed, looking at the Arts and Culture Plan, that we have an opportunity for just a modest update, so we're going to ask the Arts Council to tackle that in the next year. We are working right now on a new park zone that will come to you next year. That's part two of the open space zone that we talked about earlier. And Councilmember Reynolds beat me to the punch. As we're going through the zoning work, our Parks Code is really out of date, and we need we need to tackle that in the next two years as well with in partnership with the Parks and Rec Commission. The state legislative session is always a big, a big commitment, and we pay a lot of attention to that, so just a reminder, we're headed into a long session in 2025. And then certainly, related to the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update that you will adopt by the end of this year, there will be a whole body of work coming out of that plan that will be scheduled into the next biennium and beyond. All right, one more slide, and then I'll be wrapping up. Some other key highlights, the EV charging infrastructure plan or the EV charging plan, which I've had a lot of questions about. That term is really an umbrella, represents a whole suite of what I will call subplans, for lack of a better word. We're taking the first bite at the apple right now and doing some planning work around the city's fleet. That ties directly to that new Public Safety and Maintenance Building, and we'll have more work coming. It will span the next biennium and into 26, excuse me, 27, 28 as well. The Light Rail Station is projected to open at the end of 2025. Multiple teams, police, fire, city manager's office, communications, others are are planning for that opening. We do have a partnership with Eastside Fire and Rescue. They now provide fire and emergency medical services. If you look at their work plan, there's some things that they've identified to work on in the next year. It's our job to partner with them on that. One of the items is looking at our our turn times and possibly evaluating the Station 91 and 92 boundaries, and while we do that, also looking at the services that we receive regionally and if we need to make any adjustments there. I already mentioned this, but the finance financial software is intended to go live in January, but the work isn't done yet. We have several more modules to implement, and that will probably take the better part of the next two years, but it's really important work, and we're going to keep on it. Again, I cherry-picked a few work plan highlights. Mr. Mayor, it's probably appropriate to stop there unless you want to dive into the budget proposals. I can have Matt come back up, and we can finish the presentation and stop screen sharing, or do you want to stop here and talk work plan?
Council, what do you want to do? We we can talk work plan items from the council, or we can continue on with Matt?
Roll through the budget proposal. All right, Matt, come on.
All right, we'll keep going with the presentation, and we'll...
Okay, thank you, Council. Ben, go ahead and pull up the budget proposals. Okay, so Exhibit 3 of your agenda packet for AB 6555 laid out seven different budget proposals for City Council's consideration tonight for the disposition of the remaining unassigned fund balance in the general fund from 2023 year-end. So we ended 2023 and with a just a little over a $4 million balance, and the council has taken action on the majority of those funds and made some strategic investments through throughout this year. There's about just over $500,000 left, which we want to present to the council tonight and get your feedback on the seven proposals. Next slide. So the proposals are outlined here, with the first being in standard practice with council's prior actions, contribution to the Municipal Facility Replacement Fund. The council has been diligent on making contributions with the most recent one at the October 1 meeting of $1 million. And so this is proposing to make an additional contribution to continue to to sock away funds in that, sock away resources into that fund, given that the target funding balance is $10 million, and and as Jesse alluded to, much of our focus over the next two years will be around the city's facilities. The second item is the Communications and Public Relations Support, additional resources to improve or enhance our communications over the next two years. The Gun Buyback Program was proposed in May of 2023 from the City Council. We were unable to act on that buyback program, in large part because we've been without an operational facility. Now that those facilities are coming back online, we would like to put it out to the council again for consideration. There's a number four is to start investing and putting money towards the EV charging plan work that we have ahead. Number five is a proposal that the the council requested we be we bring back when the classification and compensation plan was adopted in June of this year, and so that is there for consideration. And then number six and seven are two limited-term positions to support the water utility, particularly the capital work, given the robust capital improvement plan associated with the water distribution system. Next slide. Okay, so these are the recommended actions pulled directly from the Agenda Bill for council's consideration tonight on making taking any action on the budget proposals. Next slide. Okay, we're next steps. Just as a reminder, we have an additional release valve with the November 4 meeting. If needed, we are going to come back with a number of budget-related items and give the council an opportunity to review the updates that we're going to make based on the feedback we get this evening at the November 19 meeting, and we're we're hoping to work with the council to adopt the budget by December 3. And with that, we can stop sharing, and if it's of value, we can pull up a tool that might facilitate the discussion around budget proposals, but when we get to that, when we get to budget proposals, we're happy to dive in on that. So we can open it up for discussion on the work plan and budget proposals. I leave it to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do is I'm going to reserve the work plan items until after the budget proposals, so we'll work our way through that, and then we'll we'll have plenty of time to discuss the work plan. So are there any questions on the budget proposals?
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderall.
So on the EV charging plan, I'm a little unclear and a little uncertain, if my, if I'm not unclear, I'm uncertain, about the goal to feature or have a readiness and capacity study to evaluate increasing EV charging at commercial and residential properties citywide. Is is there some thought that the city would be funding this, developing EV charging stations on its own?
No, no. No. But we are planning for it and we need to, there's multiple parts to this. First, we need to collaborate with PSE to make sure as the island's capacity needs are changing, I'm not using the right term, sorry, Matt Larson, if you're listening, to make sure that we can enhance infrastructure, residential, public facilities, commercial, to accommodate EV charging. I think the other thing, Councilmember Andrell, that that planning work really focuses on is potential code changes, that we may be changing our development code to require additional EV charging technology. But we have to do a whole body of planning work before I can even come before you to make any recommendations in that regard.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to comment then that if this is guided towards that and guided towards providing our own fleet with charging and not getting into the business of or subsidizing EV charging in any way, shape, or form, I probably have a lot less angst about it.
Let me read you some notes I have right on my screen. I'm going to have to come up with a better way to talk about the EV charging plan because it's a term, I will call it an umbrella, and it really represents a whole bunch of smaller bodies of work. I'll call them subplans. Not a great terminology, I'll come up with something better. But our first bite at the apple is happening right now. We just submitted a grant through the Department of Commerce to fund our own fleet study. And the reason that's moving forward right now, even without me telling you that, is because we're designing a new building where most of our fleet will be housed. And so we want the planning work to integrate with that PSM building. So that's the first bite at the apple. Up next, maybe not, we can talk about the order later, is a look at the rest of our public facilities. How do we want to integrate EV charging infrastructure into parks, schools, things like that, even partnering with Sound Transit on the Park and Ride. Zooming out even more is the rest of the island, planning for additional capacity and EV charging infrastructure island-wide. What does that look like? What do we plan to regulate? So are we paying for all that? No. But it's a sort of concentric planning circles to get bigger and bigger as we go. I do anticipate that whole body of work will take us three to four years. That is what was anticipated in the climate action plan, starting with our own fleet right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Wyker.
Jesse, can you talk a little bit about the water positions there, two, and then that public relations one? I know they're term limited, but you still need to find people and water, 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 infrastructure, infrastructure, totally get that. But talk about what happens if we don't get those positions.
Sure. The communications and PR, public relations request. I met with the director's team, gosh, last spring, and we talked about our funding priorities and it was nearly, I think it was unanimous, we all agreed that we need more help on communications. There's just so much going on. We have one communications manager and the way we deliver communications isn't the most efficient. Everybody with a job at the city has a role. So you have a very busy project manager working on a capital project and then we also tell him to go update the Let's Talk page. I couldn't come up with the resources, given our current budget constraints, to fund a position. But in this past year in particular, we have leaned on consultants when we needed additional horsepower, particularly during emergencies. So I put it on the list for consideration, some additional funding that we would just have if we need help during peak times. We toyed with possibly an internship, but it doesn't get us very far. So I imagine those dollars will likely be spent for consultants. That's that. The two positions in the water utility, a little bit different. We have such a huge body of work happening on the capital project side. Anytime we're doing work in our utilities, our utility staff members are called out to support those capital projects. So what's happening right now is because of the volume, like some of our maintenance is, I don't want to say it's falling behind, but it's tough to juggle both, right? The capital demands where we need our skilled team members out, working with contractors and supporting those projects, and the day-to-day maintenance of our utility system. So these two positions come in to basically relieve that load. So we will have dedicated staff working on the capital side of the utility projects and dedicated staff on maintenance. Those funds, those two positions will be funded through the utility. We have the capacity to do that in the utility fund. I still, when we're adding positions like that, I want the visibility and I want the council to give the go-ahead for something like that. That's why those are on that list.
So those don't hit the money we can use tonight that would be built into rates, right?
That's correct. They're funded elsewhere. And if you want my opinion, those are the two highest, those positions are probably the highest priority on that list in front of you tonight.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
I have a motion when the time is right.
Okay. Let me go to Councilmember Jacobson.
My share, Councilmember Andrell's concern about EV charging, and I found it interesting that, I guess, Met Market eliminated all their charging things. And I understand that, from what I've read, that that's not unusual, that it's looking more toward private enterprise. I don't see why we should ever be in the business of running that kind of a system because I think it's far, that's neither here nor there. The one thing I was going to talk about is the gun buyback thing. And I understand that we have some, you know, some internal restraints from getting with that. And I'm wondering if Kirkland has an operating thing, why can't we just interlocal with them, have them do that stuff and we reimburse them for the cost of it? And that would seem to me to dissipate the need for $3,000 with overhead, among other things. And, you know, it would be, I think that would be, you know, a good way of solving that problem and getting that program in effect. And if for some reason somebody can't get Kirkland to drop off a gun, I'm sure we can figure out some way to do that. As an aside, I'd make a comment. I would like to commend the city manager very much for doing adaptive staffing because I was conspicuously absent when I came on the council. And the idea was we just hire more people. And at one point, there were 200 and some FTEs here and we were creating a problem for ourselves. So I think that's, I think that's very enlightened and a good way also to maximize and take best advantage of skill sets that may be better applied in a different context. So, good on you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyker.
Okay, one more. Jesse, can you talk a little bit about the municipal facility replacement fund? 150 seems low if we need a new building and need to figure out what to do with all of that. So is 150 at least or, like, we could use more there, right?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. This was, this fund was created right after the closure of City Hall and it was actually done at the direction of the council. So again, I want to acknowledge your leadership on our financial stewardship. It is, it is a resource we need even just to get the design off the ground and we have been directing our excess revenue there. 150 doesn't get us very far, but again, our recommendation to you is when there is extra, that is the place where it is going to be needed. It's your policy decision tonight and ultimately at the time you adopt your budget, how much of that $500,000 surplus from 2023 you'd like to direct to that fund. Obviously, you have some other things on that list that are also important.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah. I move that we approve budget proposals numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7.
It's your second.
All right, let me finish. And direct staff to include the associated funding in the final 2025, 2026 biennial budget.
It's your second.
Let's see. Ben, could you put back on the screen for us the list of budget proposals and then I'll be clear what was included in that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Just to recap, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7. Seconded by Councilmember Wyber.
Maybe Matt can weigh in on this. Do we want to use the interactive tool where we can toggle on these proposals going through or not?
Sure. Why don't you pull that up for us?
Perfect.
So what you see here is Excel spreadsheet.
A beautiful Excel spreadsheet. So what you're seeing in the top row, row number 2, is your beginning balance, the $501,000 that we have at play this evening. And what Ben has done is he's shown you budget proposals 1 through 7, the originating department, whether these are one-time expenses or ongoing, the associated costs in 2025 and 2026. And based on the motion that is on the floor, he has activated in column K, the approval column, these as approved. So you can see the net effect in row 19 of remaining $56,000 available. This also takes into account at the very bottom of the table, the impact to the water fund. So as Jesse pointed out, budget proposals number 6 and 7 regarding the limited-term positions, those are hitting the water fund. They are not hitting the general fund, unassigned fund balance.
Okay, quick question for you. The green balance, are you of the inclination that we should associate that with something else like the facility fund? Okay.
That would be encouraged by staff.
All right. So counsel, any amendments to the motion? Councilmember Jacobson.
I'd move to amend, to pull the money in item number 3 into the item number 1.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilmember Reynolds.
Just want to make sure I understand what you're proposing to do. Are you suggesting we eliminate the gun buyback program and just make the 150 be 175? Is it?
So he said to move the money from item 3 to item 1.
So we would spend 175 on the municipal facility replacement fund and not have the gun buyback?
No, he didn't mention canceling the gun buyback. He's talking about the money. So the motion is to move the money from 3 to 1.
Money, I'm not doing anything with the program yet.
Do we understand the motion on the floor is to move the $25,000 from item 3 to item 1?
Yeah, that's all that I'm moving.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, I think I'd be supportive of that. I mean, the $25,000, based on our really lack of experience or success, is money just sitting there, not doing any good? I would be highly supportive of continuing to fund the municipal facility replacement fund, easy to say, and explore an interlocal with Kirkland, given that they have the infrastructure set up and have, perhaps compensate them for every Mercer Island gun they take in.
Okay. Counsel, I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I oppose this. I don't see how we have a buyback program without anything to buy, without any resources to use for the buy. So I think this is contrary to what we had decided earlier in this year and I'm going to oppose this.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds.
I was largely going to echo those comments. We take the money away, we take the program away. I don't see how, we need the money to have the program and I think it would be most unfortunate to lose it.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Well, isn't, haven't, didn't we appropriate it in the 24 budget? Isn't there money in there for the gun buyback program?
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor. We originally funded the program using ARPA funds, Councilmember Jacobson.
Okay.
And so, and the program was not delivered, even though it was directed by a majority of the council, due to the closure of City Hall in fairness. We would like, our direction from you was to deliver the program. I need it to be refunded officially because the ARPA funds will not be available next year. So that's what happened there mechanically.
Okay, I get that. Thank you.
Question.
Okay, Councilmember Wyker.
Can you remind me what the gun buyback program is? And maybe our police chief wants to talk about it. Like, what is it? Is it?
Sure. Simply the program and we have it outlined, it just was not executed yet because of the facility situation. Incentivizes people to turn in their weapons. It's based on the Kirkland model. We collect them and they receive gift cards as an incentive. So the thinking is it helps take weapons off the street.
And the 25K is for one year or two and gift cards and staff and the whole thing?
Yeah, it was for a trial program to do at one time. We have no idea how successful it would be, so $25,000 was the recommendation to try it. And then we'd be happy to give you feedback from our experience. We just didn't get to it yet and for that I do apologize.
And do we have staffing resources to do it now if we allocate the 25K?
As long as it happens next year, because we will be in buildings and have more capability being next to City Hall where we have storage than we currently do.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to ask Jake if you accept a friendly amendment to split the difference and allocate $12,500 to the program so that there is still a program.
I'm agreeable with that.
And take the other $12,500 and put it into the replacement fund.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a friendly amendment to the amendment and that was moved by, the original amendment was moved by Jacobson, seconded by Andrell?
I had seconded by Wendy.
Wyker. So are you?
Can I read what I have?
Councilmember Wyker, you're, okay.
Can I read what I have, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I have amend to pull 12.5 thousand from item number 3 gun buyback program to item number 1 municipal facilities replacement fund contribution.
Okay. Everybody's agreeable to that?
That's a fair characterization, yep.
And for Matt Mourning's benefit, do we want to specify the year in which this is going to go?
That would be helpful.
Sure. So make your own motion. Do you want to put it in 24?
Currently slated for 2025, so no change to that.
Okay. I just want to, I want to make sure that the motion is capturing that it's 25. Okay? Councilmember Wyker.
Jesse, is that sufficient to do a pilot, in your opinion?
We don't know because we haven't done it yet, but we will structure a program based around the resources that are allocated.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Reynolds.
Just want to note, I don't recall the numbers since we talked about it last time and it's been a year or more, but Kirkland's experience was considerably more than that. I don't recall the exact number, but it was in the $50,000 to $75,000 range, if I recall. I think, you know, we could do this program for 100 bucks if we wanted to. It's rolling to buy one gun at that point. It's just a question of how much we want to spend and how much success we're going to have. Nobody's going to throw that money away if we allocate 25,000. If that is more than enough to buy the guns that are coming in, we'll have money left over. And I'd be fully supportive of reallocating the funds to the building replacement fund at that time. But I think it would be a darn shame to cut the program down so much that we can't get as many guns off the street as we can and potentially save lives.
Okay. So, Councilmember Wyber.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that $12,000 is kind of a rounding error in the big scheme of things for the facilities, but if it saves a life, it's a lot more than a rounding error. So I would prefer that we keep it all 25K in the gun buyback program. And if we don't use it all, then I'm supportive of putting it into the facilities fund. But I'm not supportive of the motion to take 12 and 1/2 out of it without even starting it.
Okay. Dare I ask if you would like to incorporate in your amendment the idea of partnering with Kirkland?
Yes. I would. I would amend my motion or change my motion to say that we should actively partner with Kirkland or any other municipality that has an operating gun program. And I suspect that our chief of police would, probably more knowledgeable than anybody else in this room about who is and where he would go to shop that.
Okay, so let me ask, this is in the alternative, right? Not as a mandate? Okay, Councilmember Wyker?
Yeah.
Okay. So, City Clerk, you had text that was emailed to you for Councilmember Jacobson's. Can you add to precede his text in the alternative and then just carry on with all of his texts? And that would go at the end of the gun buyback text that existed on item 5?
Yes, one second.
And we'll get this on the screen. And we'll get this on the screen for you, council.
You wanted it proceeding?
You're going to have everything that's already in number five, and then you're going to say in the alternative, enter into an interlocal. All right, if we can blow that up as big as possible. And if you can see, yeah, councilmember Jacobson's looking at that.
I'm good with that.
Somewhere in there, we actually need the text of item number five. Ali, I don't know if you could assist with this, but what we're trying to amend is item number five text. We've amended the dollars.
Item three.
No, it's item number three.
Oh, sorry, item number three. We've amended the dollars, which I guess that first section is fine. But now we're dealing with an amendment to the text of item number three.
I don't believe we have text for item number three, it just says gun buyback.
It has a description, and the description reads, "This proposal is a pilot modeled after." We're talking about amending this description to add in the alternative, and then...
I don't think you need to amend the narrative. I think you can just let this be the new narrative if you're...
But this isn't, this is just adding on to that narrative, right? It's in the alternative to the existing text. You could copy and paste the existing text into what you have here, and we'll be at that point, but right now...
Okay, I don't have the existing text in front of me, so I'm sorry.
I can read it for the city clerk. This proposal, this proposal... It's kind of got an error there. This proposal, pilot modeled after the city of Kirkland's gun buyback program, period. The program includes a monetary incentive, per n e g, gift card, close per n, for each gun relinquished via scheduled gun buyback events. Period. Pilot, yeah, just there. Okay. Does that, councilmember Jacobson, does that reflect what you're looking for? And seconded, looks good with that, okay. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this. I think our original intention here was to have something located on Mercer Island. I think we're adding in a disincentive when we're trying to incentivize people to do something. I think traveling in Kirkland, adding another hour or so to the process is the opposite of what we're hoping to do.
Councilor Wyker.
So when you read the narrative about the two events, we're buying one event instead of two, and we're looking into the Kirkland model as an alternative to doing those events. This is how I understand this motion.
It's just providing flexibility from what I can read.
Right.
And maybe scale, right? Every dollar is going to the buyback instead of the administration of a program. All right, any other discussion? Councilmember Weinberg.
I think what I'm reading this to say is, in the alternative, enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Kirkland or the municipality operating a gun buyback program to purchase guns, if any, from Mercer Island residents seeking to donate guns to any such gun buyback program subject to reasonable reimbursement from the city of Mercer Island. It sounds to me like you're saying the event would be taking place in Kirkland, but that the money for the gun being brought by a Mercer Island resident would be coming from the Mercer Island budget. Is that correct?
That reflects my reading of it.
So it is moving the event to Kirkland's, then?
Well, moving, it may be having the event in Kirkland absent being able to have the event in Mercer Island. Like, in the alternative, is, do you want an event or no event? We've been at this for a couple of years, and here now accomplish nothing.
I think we heard the city manager say that if we have funding, we could do it in the upcoming year. I think if we move the event to Kirkland's, there are going to be guns that, at least one gun that would have been donated or given if it were here on Mercer Island, that wouldn't if it's in Kirkland.
Well, I'll remind you that we have and continue to have a voluntary gun turn-in program that has been utilized by Islanders all this time. Like, there's no, there's nothing stopping somebody from doing that.
Yeah, but this essentially adds money to it. It gives more, a greater incentive to do it. I think moving it further away makes it less likely that, albeit a smaller less likely, but it's going to make it less likely that people are going to actually take guns off the street.
Okay, any other, councilmember Reynolds?
To be blunt, you know, to me, this is about kids. I had a friend of mine shot and killed when I was in high school from a gun that didn't need to be there. He never recovered from something like that. He certainly didn't recover, his family didn't recover, I didn't recover. I still carry that with me. Every gun that we buy back through a program like this is a gun that will not be used to kill somebody. The gun would be bought, purchased, destroyed, taken off the street. I think anything we do to make that program less successful, moving it farther away creates less incentive to get rid of the guns, and limiting the pool of money available is basically saying, oh, sorry, we've used up the money, can't buy anymore. So that's another gun that we would have bought that could be used to kill somebody. And that's just not okay to me. And we have to draw the line somewhere, admittedly. You know, I'm not proposing we do a million-dollar budget, but why not start with 25, see what happens? We agreed to that a few months ago, or a year ago, whenever it was. If there's money left over, we can figure out then whether that should go into the municipal facility replacement fund or be used to have another event a year later. I don't see any reason to hamstring that event before it even starts. I think it's a darn shame that puts lives at stake.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Nay.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Nope.
Okay, the amendment passes. Any other amendments? Okay, so we're back to the amended motion.
So as far as the changes to the work plan, that would come after this, right?
We'll do that after, yeah. Okay, city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Wait, hold on, I'm on the wrong one. Sorry. Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Since that passed, I need to have a follow-along motion, which is going to be, council, is there a motion to authorize the city manager to open recruitment for two water utility capital team members, budget proposals six and seven, ahead of the final budget adoption?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Weinberg, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? City clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Mayor Nice?
Aye.
And councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That gets us to, is there anything from you, Mr. Mourning, before we dive into the work plan? Okay, work plan proposals, and councilman Weinberg, I know you have one, so I'm going to turn it over to you. Sure, sure.
So I move that we direct staff to create a 2025-26 work plan item for development of a program, enabling the funding of affordable housing efforts through a fee-in-lieu option, and draft a budgetary impact statement to be brought back to the city council at the November 4th meeting for review and consideration of inclusion in the 2025-26 biennial budget.
Okay, I'll second that. So moved by councilman Weinberg, seconded by Mayor Nice. Do you want to discuss the motion in any greater detail than that?
Well, this is the primary way that we're going to be able to raise funds to actually create affordable housing. And it gives us flexibility to be able to direct it to where the land is most affordable. And there are other options that we could consider as well, but I think that this one's the most promising. And I'd like to get it on the work plan so we can start looking at what that would look like.
Okay, great. Council, any discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Sorry, councilmember Andrell.
Have, can I ask, have we or have we not had a fee-in-lieu option in the past? Jeff, are you available?
Yep.
There we go.
We have not. So this item is actually one of the tools that's presented in the draft 2024 conference of planning a housing element to consider here in the next period of time. So this motion would move that item to the front of the list of those tools that are in the housing element. And that's something that we would work on then in 2025.
Okay. Would the information that we got on November 4th include information about other jurisdictions that have this program and the success of it creating affordable housing?
No, that would be part of the work plan, the assessment of a fee-in-lieu program. What we would be coming back with on November 4th is the cost to do this work in '25, '26, not a full-blown analysis of the work item. So you would be setting that piece, councilmember Andrell, to be addressed as part of the work program.
Councilor Wyker.
All right, so I'm clear, fee-in-lieu means we would charge development of some kind for low-income housing and get it to Arch or someone who can actually build it somewhere where it might actually be built?
In lieu of, for say, some portion of the percentage.
Right, like, is that essentially what we're talking about? And we don't know if other jurisdictions have done it?
Yeah, in its most basic form, you're correct.
City of Seattle does it almost exclusively.
Yeah, other jurisdictions are doing it. I just want to be clear, I will not be in a position to have that analyzed by the fourth.
Right, got it, okay, I'll go do some homework.
Okay, council, any other discussion? Councilmember Jacobson.
My only concern with it is, and I'd ask the city manager to take a look at this, is what the impact on CPD is, which is the organization, I assume, that would be doing this work. And, you know, they've got plenty of work, and if it turns out, it gets into a priority and it becomes a priority, well, let me strike that. One would have to decide what priority it gets if we decide the cost of doing it is applicable. So I'd be very interested in hearing at some point, whether it's November 4th or next year, how things are going to, you know, what, if anything, it's going to displace, if it's going to high priority. Because we've got a bunch of things on the, you know, on the list to vote on again this year, plus a bunch backed up from prior years, so.
So here's what I will do, council, I will work with Director Thomas ahead of the November meeting to attempt to frame out in a little more detail the '25-'26 work plan and how this item might be incorporated. We already talked preliminarily today about the cost. We need to bring on a consultant to help us build the fee-in-lieu model that's probably in the ballpark of about $30,000. So don't go spending that budget proposal money yet until we get the remaining $50,000, until we get to November 4th, so that we can revisit this item and anything else you bring forward this evening. But thank you, councilmember Jacobson, we'll also try to wrap up the work plan more competitively for you.
I guess you understand me better than I express.
Okay, I'll just take a brief moment to maybe speak to the motion. Earlier tonight, when we allocated 50-some-odd thousand to Arch, we created 1.625 percent, or 1.625 units of 30% AMI, permanently supportive of housing. And the fee-in-lieu program, as it's described in the housing element, is to allow a portion of what is prescribed in our code for affordable housing. So we're currently proposing 15% of the units in town center at 50% AMI for rental. If, for example, half of the units could be fee-in-lieu, we would be taking, and Arch is responsible for calculating this number for us. They would, we would be taking the development cost of those units and collecting it as a fee-in-lieu, in which case we could turn it over to Arch. And so you can imagine that if we just spent 50 grand a night and generated 1.625 units of 30% AMI permanently supportive of housing, how incredibly powerful a fee-in-lieu program could be. But you don't want to miss the development window. So to the extent that we're up-zoning town center, some of the property, some of the zones to seven stories, you could expect some development to be forthcoming. I don't want to miss that window, and I agree with councilmember Weinberg that pushing this to the front of the line should be a high priority because it creates such a high benefit. And so I'm supporting it for that reason.
Councilmember Wyker.
I'll just say I'm worried about not actually building affordable housing. I know it's lowest-income AMI, but moving it elsewhere doesn't allow it to be here.
Yeah, and so you'll remember, the housing element only allows a portion of the onsite to be fee-in-lieu, not all of it. I think we talked about up to half of it. So, you know, if you had 7.5% onsite and 7.5% collecting the fee-in-lieu, you know, we have a huge target, and we can't step away from the size of the target. So we kind of have to...
It depends.
Look at it, that's the... Yeah.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Reynolds?
I was stewing on whether to bring this up during the budget proposal time, and I didn't, and I'm not going to suggest a proposal now, but I'm just, Ms. Van Ghorp got me some data before the meeting where I could compare our Arch contributions to those of other cities that are members of Arch. And my population data's a year old, so this is not quite right. But in round numbers, Mercer Island's contribution to Arch Housing Trust Fund is about a buck and a half per person on the island. That puts us the second lowest, with only Newcastle being below us, and the average is around eight bucks.
Okay, can we just limit the comments to the motion on the floor?
It is relevant to the motion.
Okay.
And so I just want to say that if this fee-in-lieu program allows us to increase our contribution to Arch, I'm fully supportive of it, that seems to be what the intent is, so that's why I'm going to support this.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? All right, city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
And councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other work plan proposals from council? All right. I'm going to jump into one here.
So I was able to attend organized retail crime summit with Chief Soder, along with our judge as well. It was hosted in, over at Microsoft's campus with the coordination with Mayor Redmond. And this was, it was a conference that was attended by all levels of law enforcement, Secret Service, Homeland Security, sheriffs, police chiefs, regional legislatures, state, federal government legislative representatives, and courts from across the region, and CEOs of companies like Costco and Nordstrom. And the topic was organized retail crime, and specifically King County and its leading reputation nationally as being one of the highest retail organized crime areas in the country, if not the highest. And what was discussed was local municipalities looking at their local ordinances to make sure that they had the support on the books for...
sure that they had the support on the books for, uh, not only capturing the reporting, but creating the ordinances around, uh, the things that lead to organized crime or at least facilitate it, and being able to provide police with the tools that they need to, uh, interdict when at all possible. So, uh, I had sent out some materials, I wrote a proposal, I sent out ordinances that this was modeled by, many of which were from the great city of Iskwa and up in Marysville. Everything has been on the books and is working. I've talked to chiefs and, uh, local representatives, and everybody's happy with the ordinances. So I'm gonna make a motion, uh, "I move to amend the 2025-26 work plan to include the following items, each outlined in detail in Exhibit A, to be considered individually. One, a shopping cart regulation ordinance aimed at determ, at deterring and managing organized retail crime by regulating cart containment, retrieval, and misuse to prevent their use in organized theft. Two, an ordinance to amend business license criteria allowing for revocation or suspension in cases where businesses fail to take proactive measures against organized retail crime and do not collaborate with law enforcement. Number three, an ordinance introducing mandatory minimum sentences for repeat offenders of public disorder crimes with treatment options as alternatives to reduce recidivism and encourage rehabilitation. Four, a public awareness campaign with suggested title, quote, 'See Something, Say Something: A Community Response to Shoplifting and Organized Retail Crime,' end quote, aimed at educating the public on the impact of organized retail crime, encouraging safe reporting practices, promoting community involvement in crime prevention.'" Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. By Mayor Neese, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Counsel, any, any questions, any discussion? Okay. Not seeing any. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
And Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. I believe that concludes that item of business. If there's nothing else, uh, all right, we'll move on, uh, to other business and planning schedule, and we welcome city manager Jesse Bond.
Counsel, no big updates for me. I'll just remind you again, the November, uh, the first meeting in November, the date changed to Monday, November 4th. Uh, it looks like we will have one, uh, budget item to follow up with you on at that meeting, otherwise, uh, the items in your planning schedule, um, still stand. And, uh, three meetings to close out the year. With that second meeting in December, we typically cancel, but we won't do so just yet. That's all I have.
You have to keep the threat out there, right?
Right.
All right. Counsel, any upcoming updates to report? Nope. All right. Councilmember reports. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, anything to report?
Yeah, we had a couple of topics. We had a pick meeting, uh, last Wednesday. There was a very robust discussion about, uh, King County solid waste. I know Jake is on, what he affectionately refers to as the Trash Commission, I think. Uh, but obviously they are, uh, there's some potential, you know, significant rate increases coming. Uh, so they, they came and talked to us about that, and there was lots, sort of, some pushback from cities about trying to get that a little more incrementally as opposed to a, a large number, and I think it was 28 was what they were looking at. Um, second one was the, uh, PTA council met, uh, also last Wednesday. Uh, had a very long discussion about, um, e-bikes. And I know this is something on our work plan and something that Jesse highlighted tonight, but, uh, there was a lot of concern from, uh, from members of the, of the PTA about what they were sort of seeing on the roads and the need for some additional, uh, information regulation. So I promised I would bring that back, uh, and I know the chief is, is, uh, is working on that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. I have nothing to report. Councilor Wyker?
Nothing.
Okay. Councilor Weinberg?
Yeah, so a few things. Uh, first of all, I wanted to, uh, uh, follow up on a statement I made earlier about the, uh, electric vehicle chargers. Uh, the high-speed chargers, uh, which previously shared the parking lot with, uh, the Met Market here on Mercer Island, were, are actually owned by EV Go. Um, and after they had been offline for several months, I called up EV Go to find out, "Hey, what's going on?" Uh, and they told me that they were waiting on a particular part, and followed up with folks at the, uh, Seattle City Light to find out, "Hey, do you guys have a similar machine, and can you get parts for these guys?" And they said, "Oh, they stopped making those parts years ago," or a while ago, not years. Um, and so EV Go has chosen to remove, uh, the fast chargers that are there. I don't know yet whether they plan on putting new ones in there, though. So it wasn't Met Market's decision to take them out, um, but we know why. Uh, they had to be taken out because they weren't, they weren't gonna work again. Uh, I'm hopeful that we're gonna, uh, see a replacement there, because those are our only fast chargers, uh, that I know of on the island. Okay, so, uh, other stuff. Uh, we had the King County Cities Climate Collaborative Meeting, uh, or Climate Collaboration Meeting on, uh, Friday the 4th. Uh, the primary topic conversation there, uh, that this month was recycling and how we might achieve a higher recycling rate. And we had a guest speaker, Representative Liz Berry, who came to discuss details of the Rerap Act. Uh, this is used, uh, city, uh, microphones talk about it, so I won't go into a lot of details there, um, but, uh, it would, uh, help with, uh, recycling and make curbside recycling free. Uh, and the next open lunch is, uh, that I'm hosting is gonna be, uh, coming Saturday on October 19th at Pagliacci Pizza. As always, uh, all are welcome. It's an open agenda, news, sports, weather, humor, even whether pineapple should be on a pizza. Any even question about city, city business? All I ask is that people show the respects to the chef by ordering some food and/or beverage.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
Pineapple does belong on a pizza, but that's not what I wanted to talk about. Um, they just mentioned the Parks Commission met last week and, uh, kind of embarked on Part Two of the park zone, where originally we were looking at open spaces. We've started off looking at the parks now, uh, spent most of this meeting talking about the, uh, the purposes of, of the parks and the uses permitted. Uh, staff are gonna take some of the next steps, but, uh, lots of work to do still, but the project has begun.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Andrell?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Uh, Utility Board met a week or so ago and, uh, approved the rates, all of which I sent to you guys by email, uh, I think before our last meeting or after our last meeting. And, uh, the head of the Utility Board, Chairman McConnell, will be, uh, visiting us on December